Good to be seen.
Good evening, everyone. I will call the meeting of the Breezy Point Planning Commission to order. I would propose an agenda adjustment for your consideration. I would propose moving items G and H near to the end of the agenda before open forum number two. It would facilitate a couple of presentations that we will be having tonight to occur and allow people to leave if they don't want to sit through our discussion of an ordinance amendment, so I would ask for your approval to adjust the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. Thank you. Approval of minutes of the June 13th, 2017 meeting.
I'll move the approval as drafted.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of that motion? If not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. City Council A is on report on the July 3rd, 2017 meeting. Councilman Maroni.
I've got a whole lot to report. The agenda was pretty light. My thing is just for your knowledge is we did replace a slide about 20 years old at the city park here, so improved purchase in that. We are also moving forward with a compensation study with today's pay rates and job descriptions. We felt that this, in order for the city to be competitive with employing new employees potentially, we wanted us to have an outside view to make sure that we're in standards with what we have for pay rates and for job classifications, so we're to move forward with that. That is at a cost of about $700, but NJPA will be stepping up and bringing up to $7,500, but the cost to the city is only $385, so great step forward there. We also approve the Deacon's Lodge second edition extension and also City Hall and the Public Safety Building will be going through a home renovation, a home system updated some technology.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilman Maroni? No questions? We'll move on to open forum number one. I will open open forum number one and ask any speaker to approach the microphone and state their name and address. Would anyone like to speak? Okay. I will close open forum number one and we will have an open forum at the end of the meeting if someone would like to speak at that point. We will move to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing to consider conditional use permit application 2017-03 White Birch Inc., 30793 Ranchette Drive to develop convenience store with fueling islands and car wash commercial building. I will open the public hearing for this request.
The applicant's representatives are here and the Mr. Spizzo from the resort. They have a presentation for you. They've got the machine set up and I think Mr. Landecker will take care of the presentation for the applicant.
Great.
Let's make sure we get this going. As Jerry said, I'm David Landecker, representing White Birch Inc. in this application. My address is 8581 Red Drive, Breezy Point, Minnesota. So it's fantastic to be back again in front of Planning Commission and those in the audience that have been here previously, but our journey started about two years ago, if you recall, when I came in here. We discussed what might happen with a convenience store at the corner of Ranchette and County Road 11. We left thinking that that was something that might happen later that fall, but actually got into planning and discussing that particular site and it led to many other discussions which ultimately brought us back to this was this particular piece of property. So I'm kind of, I've got to bring you to the convenience store, but I need to tell you about kind of unveiling a master plan for that area. So this is the first time publicly that we've had an opportunity to share this with anybody, but we left the first meeting and spent the last two years or so with architects, planners. We've had meetings with your staff, engineers, of course, to talk about this 40-acre parcel approximately that sits west of Ranchette on County Road 11. And the resort, in discussing just the convenience store, which I was here for about two years ago, you know, I kind of urged them to think about, what about the whole property? And in their juggling bucket, I call it, they have a desire to add an additional ice arena to the existing one that sits here. And so I said, you know, we really should think about with the change in 371 and the bypass and the direct route into Breezy Point, that there's an opportunity here to capture kind of a center commercial area which the property is zoned for and kind of look at this whole site. What might the whole site accommodate because it gets involved with traffic studies, working with the county highway department, et cetera, which is all part of trying to figure out what do we do with the convenience store? So we kind of had to go backwards, look at what we might do with the whole piece of property, work our way through it. So in that, in that time period, we, you know, we sat down with the county highway engineer during that journey and spent about eight months at Crow Wing County Highway Department doing about a 550-page traffic study to help them assess what is the best approach to servicing this piece of property, not only the convenience store, but also the potential for the property to the north. So it kind of all fed on itself. So the property to the north is the, as you know, it is the ice facility that's there now. They have goals to expand another rink and they call it an event center because it might be capable of also holding some other events within sight, larger meetings, maybe displays, and so forth. They also are adding, this is their current lodging here for their, for their skaters, some additional lodging or some upgraded lodging for the resort and the, that skating community, as well as potentially renovating this building into a more of a community center with a large pool and exercise equipment and things like that. Again, dreams, ideas, plans for developing, looking at the future of the city. And again, we needed to think about if we maximize the use of the property, how does that affect traffic and those sorts of things? When we jump down to the south property, it's zoned commercial. This property right here is zoned commercial. On this line right here, there's, there's two properties. This is commercial. This is, boy, I get confused as to what exactly that zoning district is called.
Urban Reserve.
Urban Reserve. So we're not going into the urban reserve. The development would stay within the confines of the commercial property. The urban reserve property would be graded and we'd hold some stormwater features on it, but ultimately would remain open and not developed from the standpoint of having structures and parking and housing and those kinds of things. So we've, you know, we've looked at it all. This particular piece of property here, we're showing the convenience store, a car wash building, a commercial building here. This shows a lodging building, possible hotel, and then the three buildings around here can be retail, medical offices, really open to whatever the current market might be for those types of things. And we've actually had people come and knock on the door and say, hey, we're thinking about this in Breezy Point that this site works for. So we're really excited about the future here and I know that, I know that the city will be too. So there's a lot to this, to this project. I just thought it was worthwhile kind of taking the journey back to talk about the things that have happened because as we look at the site that we're developing, we're actually considering many of the things that will feed into the environmental pieces that are addressed here, comprehensive plan. So we're actually going to look at grading this whole site and doing a regional pond for, and stormwater drainage for this site right off the bat to try to get it prepared so that nobody has to look at individual sites and kind of muck it up. We want to take care of it right off the front end and that would be part of the, the front end cost to get through, through that development. So, and we'll go, we'll just, what I've done here is just simply worked with, let's see if I get this right. This is not my computer, so. So first thing is zoning. Again, we kind of, I kind of talked about, but the site is here. It's got the urban reserve and then the commercial at the corner. And next, this is the, this is the conditions of the existing site. So it's got the red barn on it that everybody familiarizes herself with as they come down the street. There's a little house on there and some miscellaneous buildings, outbuildings that are out there as well, well-inseptic. Same thing. So this is kind of the overall site plan. And again, I know this is all part of your application, but the, the site plan that's shown here pretty much outlines what's on the, on the master plan, but it shows the detail of what will be pavement in the convenience store, what's the convenience store area. It also shows some other, you know, the background of what these other buildings may look like, how that might be shaped. And this is an idea. It doesn't necessarily need to be the final thing. Once folks come in, the buildings might change. There might be more buildings and they might be, you know, cut up. Their configuration might change a little bit, but we're trying to get a concept because we need to think about how it fits, how it fits the stormwater, water component of it. There's no changes made requested of zoning. So similarly, we're dealing with a commercial piece of property, conditional use, use is allowed. It's a matter of trying to zero in on those conditions that you'll be, you'll be visiting. So with, with the traffic plan, and I maybe need to go back just to, to do that. So the traffic study came back and you have the plan behind you and there's, the traffic or the Crow Wing County came up with years ago, and they talked about having a back a draw, kind of go all along Ranchette behind the school and come out, you know, pop out by the school here. And we went into them and said, you know, it's probably not realistic. I mean, it doesn't work for us today and will you ever get it done? I mean, you can't speculate on outcomes if you really don't have the right of way secured and things like that, or you're putting the onus on the city to, you know, not to allow access on the road. Because if you look at this map here, it says eliminate access, no access down here on our development and it, you know, it sort of, it doesn't allow for easy use of our property. So coming back to the math, what we agreed to after the studies were completed, we looked out 10 years after, so we looked out if the build-out took 20 years to build this whole project. And then we looked 10 years beyond that. So we put a 2.5% increase in all the residential areas in the city growing, so traffic keeps multiplying year after year after year. It came back that this intersection probably doesn't fail, probably doesn't require lights, probably doesn't require a lot of anything other than, you know, watching it. What would happen, which would cause it to have serious side effects that might create lights and things like that, is what starts happening with accidents and things like that. But if you just look at the paper and look at the black and white study, the math, the math sort of doesn't necessarily promote the idea that there will become issues with Ranchette. Now that being said, the county and the developer worked out, you know, sort of the, well, let's say that it likely will happen. So what can we do to protect the right of way in the event that we need to deal with different opportunities, whether it be lights, whether it be roundabout, whatever it might be? So they allowed us to keep this entrance here and again, it will require us to do some different striping here because we're going to have the through lane actually come through on the bottom. Right now, it kind of comes through in the middle and there's a bypass there. So that would change. That's not in the cards for today because we're not developing that property to the north, but it's part of the agreement. It'll be a document that the county and the developer will agree on so that we can cement this in place and don't have to revisit it five years from now. People might have changed that are there making this agreement. At the intersection of Ranchette, we would come in with, you'll see there's sort of three lane approaches. So we've got a through lane and then we've got a right and a left turn lane. So we'll have three lanes coming in there to keep traffic moving. And then coming into the convenience store, in this development, commercial development area, we have a right turn in only. So you can come into the development, but your exit is back out on the Ranchette and then ultimately up into the intersection. When we get to the end of the presentation, I'll show you what the county's thought process is with what that intersection could look like based on their understanding of how they do things today in the engineering world. But they wanted to make sure that I told you that it's, we just want to make sure we protect the ability to enhance the intersection to whatever level it needs to be in the future, to all possibilities. If they aren't picking a solution today and saying, this is going to be a roundabout, we're going to show you a roundabout, that's not, nobody's building roundabouts today. It's not in the design. Now it might come that the city, in their wisdom and the county, get together and say, hey, this money popped up and let's go build a roundabout. It could happen anytime, but for today, it's just a matter of discussion. Sorry for boring you with all the highway details. So this is the grading plan and again, it's, you know, I'm just kind of going through the application pieces. In case you have questions, we can bounce back to them, but ultimately, this property has a 60-foot elevation change from the top of the hill here to the left. So there's 60 feet of relief. If you've been through the site, there's sort of a swale that's occurring in here. Our goal is to, you know, lift this site elevated. It'll be a little bit below the intersection, but it'll be elevated. And then this steps down a little bit. These sites all get stepped down. So the dirt is coming from here to increase the site height there to kind of keep it all moving. All the plans are, is everything's moving to the northwest. We have a retention pond that's designed here to take the water. This piece here is actually kind of a, because of what's going across the street and the intent of having it more sports orientated, this piece of property here is actually flattened out so it can be a pond hatching right in the winter time. It can be used as soccer or kickball or other recreational things in the summertime. So that if there is lodging, lodging doesn't end up on this property, that kids and parents and things go sit on lawn chairs or whatever and just let the kids play and goof around out there. So that's kind of, again, a vision of, you know, the master plan being somewhat incorporated with sports, with it being more community orientated. We have, again, we have an opening area here, kind of like Cross Lake, if you would, if you've been up to there, Town Square, where there's a Town Square area here that's open. It's an open area that can be landscaped and, or turned into some sort of art event as well. So the grading's all, all moving in this direction. The grading includes not only, again, the stormwater that we're showing here, not only includes what's needed for the convenience store, but everything that could potentially get built here. It also includes, again, even though I'm not talking about the roundabout, it also includes if I capture the whole roundabout area and consider it all pavement, it captures the stormwater that would come off the roundabout, which is again, a condition that the county and us talked about. It's, well, what happens if we do build a roundabout? What do we do with the stormwater? Well, we'll make it happen right now. Again, this is just a little mother picture of the utilities. So a public sewer, we'll be talking about public sewer. Currently, there's Forest Main going back toward the city this way. There's a gravity line that's running on the north side of 11 here. And originally, the county, well, the city and the county and everybody, and us included, thought we were going to take off from this mantle and tear up Ranchette and run sewer down the street. But once we got into the elevations and design, if we put sewer down here, that meant we would need a listation here for these buildings and it got apparent that we can bring sewer straight in here, drop a new mantle and bring sewer up, get back over to Ranchette and then come down the westerly right-of-way line of Ranchette. And so that's the sewer, the, and all of those types of things, this is a concept, I suppose, if you would, of where we believe the utility should go. We need to, you know, flesh that out with the developer's agreement and the city engineer and planner to, you know, to come to the final conclusion on how that looks. But it'd be protected with the necessary right of way for the city to take over the facilities once they're done and built and completed. And so that's, you know, that's what the utility showed. Like most every other property in Breezy Point, the water system is private. So the private well, private water system. We're showing a well placement here, but that could change depending on, you know, the well contractor. The building improvements have all been based on a setback from the county right-of-way line that would be established new to accommodate the potential future water improvement. So we, instead of 35 feet from County Road 11 and then, and then bumping back into 20, is it 20 feet from Ranchette, we just left everything at 35 feet because I really don't know. I think this dedication will go to the county and so I'm going to rather call it the city right of way or call it county right of way. So we've actually moved everything on the site further west. If, if no, while there's no roundabout in place, this will just become a very large lawn area. But we're not going to, we're actually going to grade it so that there's, you know, there's, it's not awkward with the development, but it will just be a lawn area so that it kind of remain that way. We don't want to plant a bunch of vegetation in there because ultimately it could get destroyed through, through construction. And so landscaping plan is fairly straightforward. We've just got three different types of plants. We've got some hosta, some honeysuckle and day lilies. We've got a sign that we'd be putting out here with a landscape, you know, a facility as well. Not really throwing a lot of trees and things in here yet because again, we've got this right of way that we're not sure what will happen to that right of way, but, but more than that, we're still developing the master plan. And what we want to do is have a master landscaping plan. So when you come into this gateway at Breezy Point and you come around the curve or other ways, you're going to look and say, it all fits together. And then, and then we do it right, you know, all swoop rather than trying to piecemeal it into the place. But again, this is an open pasture now and I think that the way this will be designed and the building architecture will, you know, it will enhance the landscaping component of it. So the traffic plan options, again, this is, we kind of talked about that. This is what a roundabout looks like there. So if you look at, I can't remember which year materials. I know Jerry has a copy of it. It's in the traffic study that we provided to. The roundabout is here and what we actually did was the developer had agreed with the county to, rather than complicate the neighborhood and center it in Ranchette and have the county potentially in the future have to go buy expensive right of way, then we would just shift the entire circle and all of the right of way needs into this development. So White Birch is consuming all of the right of way takings, if you would, that would be needed to build this. It doesn't really make any different functionality wise, whether it's centered or offset, because when you hit the circle, you hit the circle and you go around it, you go out, whichever direction you're going out. So, but that's ultimately what, what the roundabout would look like. And again, I don't want to get into, does it work? Do you like it? Don't you like it? You know, it could be streetlights someday. It could be stop signs. It could be nothing. It could stay the way it is for a long, long time. That's it. So as far as the ordinance go, from a conditional use perspective, we've complied with all the elements of the ordinance. The parking is in compliance. The setbacks are all met. We provided some ideas of what buildings might look like out there. Again, we haven't got into the design of it because it's, you know, a little bit premature to that point, but we've thrown in some ideas of what it might look like. Again, it's sort of a gateway property, so we want to make sure the ice arena, the convenience store and all the other elements are tied together architecturally, so that when you come into the, come through that part of the city, you're going to look and say, well, someone really thought of it. Oh, this should all look, looks nice. Do you want me to stay here for some questions immediately? The planning commission or what's your desires, Mr. Chairman?
Let me ask the commissioners if they have questions. David, Peggy, do you have?
I think at this point, I'd rather hear from the staff and then worry about questions.
Okay.
I do have questions, but if Jerry has something, I'd like to answer that.
Jerry, would you like to go through your staff review?
Sure.
This morning?
Okay. Again, this is a phase one of a multi-phase development. It's phase one of the master plan that they have shared with you this evening. It's, the, the specific request is for a conditional use permit to, for a gas station convenience store and a potential car wash and a commercial building. Commercial buildings, professional retail buildings are permitted uses, so they could do that without doing a conditional use. The, the gas station and the filling areas require the conditional use permits. The, this whole site that we're talking about on the south side of County Road 11 is like 17 acres. 13 of it is approx, approximately 13 acres is zoned commercial and then the remainder is urban reserve. I don't think there's any need to change the urban reserve designation because it's going to function, the urban reserve portion is going, is proposed to be stormwater retention and, and existing wetlands. I don't think there's any changes to that that are necessary. As Mr. Landecker said, the, the buildings are proposed to meet all, all their requirements in the zoning ordinance of the commercial zone portion. Staff believes that it's met the criteria as outlined in the zoning ordinance for a conditional use permit. Typically, conditional uses are uses that are permitted in a zoning district with conditions. And staff has provided you with a, some recommendations as far as the conditions for Some of these are very general and they're, they meant to, the intent is that they be addressed. Some of them will get addressed specifically here. Some of the generalities will be further defined in a developer's agreement that will, if the CUP is approved, the developer's agreement will be negotiated between the city and the developer and, and will be in front of the city council for approval sometime down the line. We think we've got some, you know, I think we've got the generalities worked out. It's, the devil sometimes is in the details and some of those, I, I don't see any insurmountable areas that we, we insurmountable areas that we, we really have to address. I think anything that, in, in working with the developer, anything that we've asked them to do, they've been very good about providing us with additional information or looking at some areas and maybe we could do this instead of this. And it's, it's been a good process so far. The potential conditions that staff is proposing, again, structures comply with setback and height requirements, entrance to the site off County Road eleven to be right-in only, primary access to be from Ranchet. Easements refer to, future improvements to County Road eleven and Ranchet intersection shall be provided prior to issues of the building permit. These are one of those devils-in-the-detail things that we probably can address one of many ways, but they will be part of the developer's agreement, and it's also part of an agreement, as Mr. Landecker said, with the, with the county. I don't think we have any of those in writing yet, but we've got some, you know, some handshakes, We're, we're looking for the sanitary sewer line to be extended to the south property line adjacent to Ranchet at some time, and Mr. Landecker did address that in his presentation. We're asking that the grading of the site be done either conjunction with or prior to a building permit. They need to acquire a stormwater permit. The lighting to be focused to, on the property only, not to be off-property. The future development of the property is probably gonna require a subdivision in the future. The fact that this is one great big piece of, of existing property, and then there's nothing else happening here, doesn't really require a subdivision at this time. But I think the planning commission will be looking at a subdivision of some kind or a PUD in the future. City engineer needs to review the utility plans when those are finalized and to approve those utility plans. And, again, the developer's agreement required for utility extensions and grading. Those are the general comments that staff would have and the recommendation that staff would have. And if you see any others that you would think you would like to be added, that's certainly your prerogative. With that, I think maybe that there's some audience participation and/or planning commission interaction with the, with the applicants, and that's probably appropriate at this time.
Would anyone like to make comments, speak to this application? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
I'm Ken Kelly, and I own a campsite in Camping Cluster One. Could you show that in proximity to the camping cluster? And what cause and effect it's going to have on the, the people that have bought into that camping cluster, not knowing, you know, other than having a stable out there? Now, we've got a gas station. Second question, your studies. Your studies are based on fatalities, accidents on the corner before something's gonna be done for traffic? That's going backwards. That's, that's not even thinkable to say that we're gonna see how many people are injured or killed before we'll do something for the traffic. That should be forethought on a project like this, not an afterthought. Again, my opinion on it, but I think it's, it is valid to say that. The impact on that, on the campsites, and that, what people have bought into by the same corporation? They bought into something where they could come out of the six-one-two area codes, come up here, enjoy some tranquility. We understand there also that we have roads, there's noise, there's traffic, there's people. It's a place to come. Breezy Point is noted for that, a place to come, enjoy yourself. Taking this and putting it in there, you've just created something people are leaving. A gas station, a gas station creates noise. Are you gonna have MUSAC? Is it gonna be limited hours? We in the campground have limited hours where we can make noise. We have to abide by them. But in the proximity of a hundred yards across the back, and I, I wish you could show that to where that isn't, the campsite, we've got a whole complex. This is what people like myself retire to, to come up here, to enjoy Breezy Point. We also down the hill have gas stations. Another question I have, how many gallons of fuel are stored here, and can your fire department handle that? There's, I think, a lot of open questions here that, that need to be addressed before it, it even goes farther in the planning stage. The impact on campground's one, Cluster One, now, correct me if I'm wrong, your sewer is going to come over through there. The campground's is gonna be mandated by some lawsuit, I'm not familiar with, you probably are here, I'm new up here, that everybody there is going to have to hook up to city sewer. City water? So, I think at the expense of some good people that came up to your area, bought into an area up here where you could kinda fun, it's a safe environment, you get away from the crime, are not gonna have something such as this in the backward. Going across the street, the development in there, that's great. You, you need hotels up here, you need to bring that in, you need to bring in a positive thing. But basing on the amount of fuel you use, including how much fuel you got out in Nav Gas, I don't know if there's been any study done on that. So, thank you very much, I, I appreciate it. You know, if they need supported documentation as far as the sewer, feel free to call me, we signed in. So, thank you. Thank you all.
I, I feel we should probably respond to the questions and, and comments because there were, were several before we take any more public comments. Jerry, would you like to respond?
If there might be other people here though that have, or in similar, you know, if we kinda gathered the questions, we can maybe capture duplicate questions or whatever.
If you guys took good notes, I think that's a, a good idea.
I think we could try.
Okay.
But I don't care who you think, let's.
That's fine. Hey, I have no problem with that.
I mean, I think we can kind of, I mean, I can get up and answer the questions that we're just asking.
Okay, good.
But there might be some others that would be appropriate to answer as well, coming to come up.
Okay. Everyone agree? Let's, let's proceed with public statements then. Would anyone else like to comment?
I'm Aubrey Kelly from.
Would you please, would you please come up?
My name is Aubrey Kelly. I've been an owner in Cluster One for three years. Not aware of any of this plan before I purchased the property. The, the one question that I guess is very important to me, along with what Ken has also raised, is they are talking about some lawsuit that we were informed of at our owners' meeting last year in regard to city sewer coming into Cluster One would be mandated if there was ever city sewer coming in onto Ranchet. I guess my, my question with that is, I've heard that that would be the responsibility cost to the owners themselves, and then I've also heard that through the lawsuit that it was mandated that that would be a cost to Breezy Point. So, if I could have clarification of that, you know, is that gonna be a cost to me? Or is that something that is going to be through the development, through a cost to someone else? That what, that is another question I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi there. Not so much a question, but I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Brent Johnson, and I own the property at the southeast corner of Ranchet and eleven. It's currently zone residential, and I thought you oughta get used to looking at me because I'm gonna petition for a change in zoning. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask real quick, what, what would you be petitioning to change it to?
I'm sorry?
Could I ask real quick what you'd be petitioning it to if it's residential today?
Uh, it's currently residential, I assume I'd go for a commercial zone.
Just for clarification.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Charles Hamilton, I'm three oh five seven two Barkwood Trail, Cluster One. White Birch did come to owners a year ago, Memorial Day, a representative of White Birch, and did lay out this proposal that was coming forward, and frankly, did scare a lot of campers with the thoughts of this lawsuit that most of us had never heard about. And that didn't know if they'd put it on our tax bill, and it was out of the blue. And frankly, was, I hesitate saying this, but it would be forced on us by the city. I did, having worked with state government for many years, did come over to see Jerry, and I've seen him a number of times over the last year and a half, learning what the facts were about this, up to and including today. I think the concerns expressed by the campers, I would support. I lived there as well. And I think that if there are, if there is more to this sewer thing or whatever, the facts ought to be up there before any decisions made, that everybody ought to be on the same page, especially when it was White Birch that came to us to tell us that's what was going to happen. And the city's position, since I spoke with Jerry, was that was not the case, that it would be brought through this property and would stop at the southerly, easterly portion of the parcel, the commercial parcel question. And, and to be there for some date somewhere in the future, when in fact, through land use, other things that this commission would do to potentially extend that down there. But the sense was, is that as a result of this project, there, there'd be no impact related to sewer on the campground. That was my sense, and I've come to understand over the last year and a half. Again, White Birch, through their representative, saying something completely opposite. So, I think that for the public record, either tonight or on another night, if there are no answers available before this project goes forward, something be put on the record in this regard. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you.
Again, Ken Kelly, White Birch, Cluster One. I'd like to submit a document that we had signed in agreement when we purchased, purchased our lot, and it, it addresses the sewer and how the sewer would affect and who has to hook up to it not. So, it is a document, if I can submit it for, excuse me, for a review. Here it is going up.
Yes.
It's my copy, so if I could.
This, and you need this back?
I do.
Okay.
But if you want, we can pick it up.
Here, yes. Could you?
We'll get some copies made.
Okay.
Let's, let's continue on for as much as we can right now.
If not, let's begin responding to the questions. David, Jerry, team up?
Yeah, but, you know, if you don't mind, I mean, we'll, we'll team up to the point that, I'll answer the questions I feel I can address that were kinda brought up, and then, and I can pose, "Hey, Jerry, what do you think about this?" or whatever. So, the first question that came up is, well, where is this in location to the campground? How far away are we? Well, the campground actually, Camping Cluster One is here that they're speaking about. And actually, at the time the Camping Cluster was built, the opposition was, is, "We don't wanna see the campground. We don't want the campground neighborhood to be visible from the roads." And so, the wisdom of the planning commission at the time was to leave a buffer around the campground, so the campground is sort of, you know, exclusive to itself and has already created its own buffer, if you would, to keep itself protected from, to itself, plus the public. So, there's a buffer there, the buffer doesn't disappear, it continues to stay there. What we're, the grading plan actually lowers the site, so from what's there now, the, the site will become lowered. So, because it becomes lowered, it will be less visible and noise, et cetera, traveling up the hill to the campground, because it's actually gonna be a cut there of ten feet or more before it even gets into the campground. So, not only is there a vegetative buffer, but there'll be an elevated buffer between the new development at that particular location. So, that's, you know, location-wise, that's where it's at. From the traffic study perspective, I'm sorry if I misled the gentleman, Mr. Kelly, that spoke, that the only way there would be a change in traffic control out there is through fatalities or accidents. What I said is, there was a study done, very extensive study. The county made us go back and forth and, and spend nearly six months of building the study, addressing different scenarios, traffic patterns, growth patterns within the city, et cetera, both coming from Ranchet, along County Road eleven, and through other parts of the city, that, that bring us to the points of what, what's gonna happen with traffic as it's that position. It doesn't mean that at any point along the way, it could be tomorrow, that the city says, "You know what? We really think we wanna put a roundabout in there." It's a matter of how do you afford to put it in there, and when does it go in? So, the traffic study that was done for the next thirty-some years did not suggest that anything needed to be done, eminently needed to be done. The traffic was, you know, when you get thirty years out, it might start, you might need to wait three minutes when school is on and everybody's trying to get their kids to school. There were some high points in time where traffic was gonna be, was gonna be changing at that intersection as growth occurred, as uses occurred, but nothing that demanded on paper through the study that it, that it actually demanded that there be some kind of control, that light, stop signs, roundabout, whatever that, whatever that control might be. Again, it's up to the community is to decide, when do they wanna change and add something? Not on similar to, to Pequot Lakes back in the day when I was young in my career, the town fought to put the lights on three seventy-one out there. They didn't have lights there, it was a stop signs. But it cost money to run the lights, cost money to put them in. But the community and the state decided that it was worth paying to do it. So, it could happen at any time. The study simply doesn't support the fact that there's a need to do anything. But I think as the development occurs, as with, the convenience store definitely won't require, but as you start building it out, you will have, you know, you have an opportunity every time you do a conditional use permit, a grant of permit, to say, "Let's look at the traffic again." So, so you have an opportunity to do that. As far as the hours go, right now, there's really no, we're not asking for, to set any hours. I mean, it could be twenty, a twenty-four-hour pump use, not unlike, you have the opportunity to pump gas and fuel here now in town. So, we're not looking to, to set hours, I think that would be unreasonable. As far as fuel, fuel storage, that's all controlled by Minnesota Pollution Control. So, I mean, we gotta get our permits through them, and it's a very scrutinized process. So, I mean, it will be protected, we're not just, you know, coming out there to be fuel monitors and can create this abundance of fuel stored there. It will be no different than a typical, typical convenience type of store. As far as the sewer goes, and I, and I'll let Jerry speak to that on behalf of the city, but what I can tell you from my interaction with the city and why we, you know, why we'd like the sewer out, and I'll go to that particular slide pretty quick, but maybe I So, this is the slide that shows the sewer. So, right now, the sewer for the development, I know that I need to take it from here, and to about at this location is where I need it to serve this development. The city is forthright in thinking and saying, "Look, if, if you're out there grading this entire site, changing the drainage, building roads, it's an opportunity for us to come in and ask you to participate in extending the sewer out to Ranchet and down to the primary line." and ask you to participate in extending the sewer out to Ranchet and down to the property line. Just for the future, it's a future extension for future opportunities. Nobody's told me that it's to go develop the campground or to make the campground, put sewer in there. I know that the, there's two campgrounds, Camping Cluster One, which some of the folks here spoke from, and Camping Cluster Two. Camping Cluster Two does have sewer. Camping Cluster One are on their own sort of holding tank and, and dumping system out there by themselves. So nobody's, nobody's told us that that's going to be a requirement. Does it get closer to the campsite? Does it provide a feasibility for it when the time is needed? Yeah, it does. But is that good planning? Does it make sense to think ahead to protect the environment? Your compliance entity should be protecting the environment as well. I mean, both for their enjoyment as well as the enjoyment of the residents in Breezy Point. So, um, I don't know that there's an immediate need, there's nobody rushing that I know, to go sewer the campground. I think the gentleman that spoke is right that if and when that time came, it's going to be fully vetted. There will be public hearings, feasibility reports, and studies done to see whether that makes sense or whether there's even a different avenue or a different route that can tend to it. So I think it's premature in thinking that this development is precipitating the need for that. I hear there's a, some kind of legal thing, I'm not aware of that. I don't know if Jerry's aware of that case, but I certainly am not and somewhat familiar with these. But, but again, I, from my perspective, working with the city, that's never been one of the targeted matters of put the sewer here because this is where we're doing it. I think that's the questions that have been asked for me to respond to.
Thank you, David. Jerry?
I don't think I can be as eloquent as the engineer. But I don't know where the rumor came from as far as servicing sewer to, or providing sewer to Camping Cluster One. The intent always was to get the sewer as far as we can with this development. And if in case in the future, there is a need for the extension to the south, we have that opportunity. That is the only reason why the sewer is even being talked about getting further to the south. I, first I've heard of a lawsuit is, is this evening. I, I have no idea what the lawsuit is about or, or who's, who's brought it. But, um, I think when we look at this, we, I think we're trying to take, be proactive about planning for the future in the best interest of the whole city in the future. And we see this as once, taking one step in that direction. And I appreciate the fact that it might not have been done in the past. And, and maybe we're looking at it from what's best for the future. And in the future, it's going to be a heck of a lot more expensive for, for the city to get from Ranchet and County Road 11 to the south of this property line than it is today. And I think we, we have an obligation to, to get it as far as we can, provide the opportunity for some folks that either need it or desire it. And, uh, again, I, I think it's proactive planning.
Any other public statements? If not, I'll close.
Jerry? One other thing, I, I, the, the comment was made about the fire department and having the ability to, to take care of the fuel. Really, and Mr. Landecker stated that, uh, fuel tanks and, and sizes and how they're installed and safety features and those type of things are all governed by PCA. And they're pretty well taken care of. I think, uh, fire departments are probably more scared of some of the pre-existing conditions where they can't get to something to fight the fire than they are of a fuel tank that, you know, if, if it goes, it's, it's there, but it's not something that's going to hurt the, the rest of the, the neighborhood. They certainly don't want to see it, they get inspected on an annual basis. If there's any concerns, the fire department knows the PCA number. And quite frankly, there's a lot of folks that know PCA's number today.
Thank you. I would suggest that we hang our questions until the next agenda item, which is how we're taking action on, uh, this request. And I will remember to give you the opportunity to ask those, those questions. Okay, I will close the public hearing and move to the next, uh, agenda item, which is, uh, the planning commission's action on the conditional use permit application, 2017 dash 03 resolution, uh, PC 17 dash 05. The resolution was contained in our, uh, our packet, so you've had an opportunity to, uh, to review it. Let's take this opportunity though to ask the questions that, that you have. Peggy, would you like to start?
Sure. I guess I would just like to say, I appreciate the fact that David, representing White Birch, has come in with kind of a complete plan. It's a lot easier for us to look at something that's looking at a large parcel and seeing how all parts of it will relate and how it will ultimately affect the other areas, including the campground. I have just a couple of questions, and one has to do with the sewer, since we're talking about it. You're extending out there with, obviously then, big enough pipes that the future, which likely will bring some development, it's already able to go. The sewers would be ready to go, the sewer pipes.
Correct.
Okay. And secondly, um, you're talking about the fact that you're being very careful to mitigate for the wetlands, which I think that's good planning again, because every bit of the development will affect the wetlands. And do you have special mitigation for things like the sand and the fuel, the oil? Is that something that's part of the...
That's actually a part of when you, I mean, I guess on the sort of more screening you did actually in the design with MPCA for the permitting.
Okay.
And, and that is, yeah. But, I mean, ultimately what happens is everything on the site that flows over ends up in this pond or depression that is going to be developed here, which is about 30 feet or so away from the wetland. So we're, any part of our development staying 30 feet or more away from that wetland would be natural.
Okay. I think to just address the obvious fears of people from the campground, and I understand that. I moved away from 612 and 651 for the same reasons. We just wanted to be where we had a little more space and a little less regulation. But the fact of the matter is, we're a community that has a comp plan and is, again, addressing that comp plan, and the comp plan calls for development. And I guess we would hope that any development we have, like this large parcel, is being done in a way that is best for the whole community. Perhaps there'll be individuals who won't like parts of it, but we're looking at the whole community and the whole development. And the fact of the matter is, it's going to happen. And we just as soon do it right and well, rather than ignore it.
Very well said, Peggy, thank you. Carol?
Yeah, um, I have some questions from Mr. Landecker. On the, the parcel that's urban reserve, it's 3.88 acres.
Yes.
Is that the area that you're talking about making up a pond there for winter skating or a...
Correct.
A field?
Yes.
But that's also wetland, right?
No, no, actually, the, the line, the kind of the demarcation between the zoning districts is right here around my red line.
Okay.
So, um, this line right here is 75 feet from the end of the wetland. So from the wetland to the edge of the commercial zoning is probably 200 to 300 feet in different areas. So there's a fairly extensive open area. If you drove by there today or anytime for that matter, you'll see this fence is very evident. And this meadow that sits below here is, is, there's quite a large piece of property. There's the snowmobile trail that's up and, and comes around, but it's... So this area is already a meadow and grass area. The pond area is actually, um, will be upland, not in the wetland. So we're not disturbing the, I mean, I didn't say that yet, nobody's asked, but there'll be no disturbing or need to mitigate to the wetland as far as filling, dredging, any of those kinds of things. There's, the wetland is not being touched in this pond. And that would be in the SWIP that we need to do for the construction. We'll have to show, you know, silt fence being constructed to make sure no materials are, you know, migrating to the wetland, et cetera. So, so it's all, it's all open out, and it will remain open and be a field that will just have different undulations, if you will, than what we see out there today.
Will the snowmobile trail stay, David?
We actually, if you look here on the plan, this is where the snowmobile trail comes through now.
Correct.
Um, kind of in the backside of the campground, and that, we're showing it into the development. So our goal here is to help accommodate the, the campground's people so they can drive their golf carts or walking paths, whatever, and get to this convenience store development or to County Road 11 with more ease. And we haven't, uh, changed, if the snowmobile pattern wants to continue to do what they're doing, we're not changing that. They can continue to do what they do, we just, they just need to, you know, fit it in and move themselves around it. And we'll probably, at the time construction is done, work with the local snowmobile club to make sure we pick the best route, so it doesn't interfere with, with things. But this pond area now, without this development being in place, really doesn't, um, hamper where that control. But it would, when the thing is totally built out, then there'll be a time where, hey, is this the right place to put the snowmobile trail for safety and, you know, kids going to the skating pond and those kinds of things, so.
So on County Road 11, heading east, there would be a right turn lane into the convenience store, is that correct?
Correct, yes, right.
Okay. And then, as your plan shows there, if someone came in there, say a truck with a big boat behind it, they're going to have to circle all the way through there to get to the gas pump?
Yeah, they'd circle all the way through and can, you know, work their way around here or exit and go out to the intersection. But they, there's, they cannot, they cannot access or enter back onto 11.
No, correct, they would have to go off of Ranchet. But they would have to circle all the way through.
And then make, make that loop. Might be better.
It, it seems like that could be a hazard with some of these...
That kind of shows you that.
Trucks and, and big boats behind them driving right through the parking lot.
Well, believe it or not, engineers with today's tools and computers have the ability to put trucks on this plan, drive them through and make the turns and do all the things they need to do to put fuel and everything out here. So they can create a mini-plan of operation. If we put campers and boats and everybody can get through it without...
I can see size-wise, I cannot see kids in the parking lot getting in and out of cars and running back and forth, is my concern.
Uh, I mean, the parking lot isn't, I mean, it's just a sort of a standard. I mean, if, so the fuel pumps will be up in this area.
Right.
So if a truck came in here to dump fuel, it's going to be up here. All of the parking for the convenience stores will be at the border.
Yeah.
So it'd be just the initial tank coming into the site and pulling into where it belongs.
Oh, that's not my concern though. My concern would be a truck with a big boat behind it pulling through the parking lot when there's families getting in or out of their car to go in or coming out of the convenience store.
Again, the only thing I can say there is we've accommodated truck and trailer and boat parking along this outside ground. So we've, you know, we've fattened out that outside bubble, if you would, to allow them to come in there, make the turn and park. Now, I don't disagree that there's people migrating back and forth in the parking lot and that traffic is going through it. But, I mean, that happens in any type of convenience store, grocery store, or anything where you have that pedestrian vehicle connection. So, I mean, I, the only thing I can say is that if from a, you know, mindful business perspective, safety, that, you know, appropriate signage, kinds of things would need to be placed. Make people aware of those of that pattern.
I can see, I mean, so often to pull into the, the pumps, you know, that's a direct pull-in. And then parking for like the convenience store is over to the side, not where they are going right through there.
So we, so, I mean, again, to your point, we've allowed two different approaches. One is they can make the turn and come up through here. The other is they can continue down the path and turn and come up here. So somebody could drive in, look and see, hey, there's a lot of busyness there. I'm going to go to the next, you know, for the next turn. So we really allow to, the ability to circulate this fairly easily. I mean, we can look at a lot of different convenience store designs and see what sort of works and doesn't work. And we think this is, um, this works well.
You know, on the same question though, Carolyn, you might look at that, it does say right in, right out.
On your...
Entrance to site from County Road 11 to be right in, right out, only.
Can I, can I answer that? That's a typo. It's, it's right, it's right in only.
Good to know.
And I think that's all the county will allow.
Yeah.
So I mean, they, they want us to make sure that we put a curve up there so it's just not on and somebody can inadvertently say, you know what? I'm going out that way, I don't care. We're going to make it so if they do, they're going to probably do some damage to their vehicles.
When you're talking with the county, was there any question about making Ranchet and 11 a four-way stop with a crosswalk? Because I can see kids at the...
Yeah, I mean, so there was, yeah, in that discussion, um, you know, there is multiple potential solutions for improving the intersection. From four-way stop to lighted stop to pedestrian walkways. I mean, it's all there. If we go back to the plan that, I'm not sure. No shading kind of takes it out, but...
There.
Yeah, so, so with the county, I mean, right now, the county is, we're doing a pedestrian crossing, painted straight, pedestrian crossing right here.
Okay, because I can see kids from the ice arena.
Oh, yeah.
Going over to a convenience store as soon as it's there.
Absolutely. And, and if you, if we took it the next step to the, the, um... The, uh, the roundabout figure, I mean, that changes because now we're doing pedestrian crossings here, here, here. So I mean, yeah, during the whole conversation with the county, pedestrians was as much of a concern as vehicle traffic.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions, Carol? No. Okay, Larry?
If you're coming from the west, how do you get into the convenience store?
Coming from the west.
On, on 11?
Yeah. Or... I come in...
That's that right turn in, right?
Well, I can come in here, or I can choose to come to the intersection and go down and come in.
Okay. And getting out, you can get back on 11 and go either left or right?
No. Yeah, if I come to 11 on Ranchet.
Yeah.
I can go right on.
Or, okay. And the same thing as you're coming from either direction, so. Okay. That was, so I knew that was probably the answer.
Yeah. So there'll be some improvements, um, at this intersection to create the right in, right out straight.
And then another question, comment, more of a curiosity thing, because we're talking here, south side of the road. The development on the north side, which if you do, what's the kind of approximate timing on a second rink? That rink brings in so much business to Breezy Point for lodging, this hockey tournament's absolutely incredible for the community. What's the timing on, if you bring in another rink, you're going to have more people to look. And obviously, that's going to be beneficial to the convenience store as well.
Right, yeah. I don't have the right answer, there's people here that might think they do, but this is what I'll tell you, is that there's some people that like to see the convenience store before the C store. And, and, but it, but it all comes down to having the financial capability to build it and have the feasibility that it works. So, um, we're on the, we're on the ice arena, we're on planning it. There's architects that have been engaged and looking at it. So I mean, it's, I can't tell you in years, but it's not like, I think I'll live to see it built. How does that sound?
But will I? You're the young guy!
I think, I think that's the goal. I think the goal is to ultimately...
I think the goal is to ultimately, we're not, we didn't go through the process of doing this master plan without thinking that the pieces were gonna be put together. And, you know, the ice arena has been the next piece all along. Again, in some people's minds, it should be the first piece and, you know, so.
The ice arena's
The ice arena is, the resort takes note of what you said, they're well aware, they, they believe that that is one of the best attributes that they bring to the community, one of the best attributes that bring the community of extending the seasonality and use of that, you know, year-round, as well as, you know, the employment opportunities and the other business that it brings to the community and other communities all over, you know, the region, so.
Very expensive. To build an arena.
Anybody else?
Oh, no, I'm not done. No, I wanna address the campground issue because I probably have more direct experience on this kind of a thing than any of the other people in your audience do. Where I've, I've got a place and a campground in Cross Lake and we, to a degree, kinda had this same process. At our place, we wanted to build garages for all the units, it was a pretty upscale place. And, you know, we went to the planning commission and so on and, and to the state and everything else, they told us, well, we need to upgrade some of our septic systems, which were kind of old, and I'm guessing the Breezy Point ones, at some point, they're gonna run into this as well. It's not an inexpensive proposition. So we're saying to them, you know, okay, we're gonna have to spend like, it's like $350,000 to upgrade the septic system, you're gonna, you've got a city sewer a mile away. What do, what about you, you know, how long before you run that line through? And then, we upgrade our system, now we're gonna be, we're gonna be like, these people are concerned, gotta be hooked up to the city system. And, and at Cross Lake, they says, it can be for at least 20 years. And, I mean, it's progress when we, when we finally get it, so we, so the, we worked with outside developers and when we upgraded the septic system. Along with that, to do our garages, he says, you guys need to build a storm shelter. Well, there's another $250,000. All of these things were good for the campground. I mean, that storm shelter that we built is probably, well, we got a pool too, that's really good. But it's probably one of the biggest assets to, to our campground in Cross Lake. And what we built, it's the strongest building in Cross Lake. So it'll take a category four hurricane, whims, you know, steel doors, steel windows, rea, uh, spancrete ceiling, no matter what happens, all of our campers, if they choose to hear those signals and go down to the shelter, they're all safe. This is all, this is all in the name of progress. These things kinda have to be done and the value of your campground goes up because you've, you've done some of these upgrades. I'm not sure that the, anyway, we, we still, yeah, we gotta put in new wells once in a while, I'm sure they do as well. But you can't say, well, that's the city's job to do that, we're the one who benefit from it and so we're the ones who did it. I was very involved in virtually all of those projects and they go back, at least maybe 10 years anyway, and we're still benefiting from all of that. So I say, the concerns that the campground has, it's probably a financial one, you can't stay quiet and isolated forever. There's gonna be progress. Someday, there is gonna be sewer in that campground. But again, like us, it may be 20 years down the road, but it's coming and it isn't getting cheaper. The fact is, is you guys are planning something to build lines that get it a lot closer than if, if it had to be done later, as an independent project. So, I commend you on that and I don't see the huge concern other than there's a financial burden, I guess when you're in a campground, it's probably called a special assessment. But it's gotta be done, I think. I'm done.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Jerry.
Are they with you?
Mike, I'm sorry.
I've got a few.
They're good.
And maybe they're just follow-up comments on what I've been hearing. One, first thing, I wanna go back to the sewer real quick. I kinda drew a quick diagram, this is my understanding, Jerry, please correct me if I'm wrong for the audience, but if I have two parcels here and the first one is gonna be developed and they only need to get to the middle part of the, of the parcel with the building for the sewer, when the next parcel, I don't care if it's a campground, I don't care if it's another building, if they need sewer, they would have to pay from their point all the way through. What we're trying to do is make the developer, White Birch, pay for that sewer to get to the end of the property, so that way the new development to the north, in this case, doesn't have that full burden. Is that a similar, let's see if I can explain?
It's a good analogy.
Yeah. So, it's, it's, if, if the development to the south had to get sewer, it's actually saving potential fina, financial costs in there. Going to this lottery here, David, we're showing the, the right in turn lane, we're showing the modifications to County Road 11 for a right turn, a left turn and a straight through. What I wanna build on real quick is, you mentioned that the county said that they wanted to add the pedestrian crossing. That's not in here, it's not in our package, is that something that the county is for sure going to do?
I think, again, you probably don't have everything, well, I think you have the
I have that.
Yeah. There's been a lot of stuff generated, so there's, there's a traffic study which has this plan in it. So, the study that we did accommodated the conversation with the cit, you know, with the, it's under color, but I thought
Yep. And I understand that that's a full master plan, what I'm asking though is, will that crossing go in with the approval of the convenience store, gas station?
Yes, because that's part of what the county is requesting.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's a county requirement or Jerry, is that a city thing that we can put in conditions?
You could put it in the condition if you wanted it to be in the condition. Most of the work on County Road 11 is, is something that has been done or the negotiations have been done between the developer and the county engineer's office, but we certainly could add that to a condition.
Isn't that one of your conditions that we have to come up with the, the traffic agreement with the county?
You do have to have the easements we were more concerned about than anything.
Right, so the county wants to perpetuate the master plan, the entire master plan. And they want us to work with them to prepare a document that will deed down the easements so that that's done now and not something that they come back and buy once properties are developed and prices go up. They also, as part of the language, have this master plan, equipment buried in as exhibits to attend to those language. So it's gonna all be spelled out because as time changes and we get a new county highway engineer someday, an assistant, and I'm not here and you're not here and the resort's not here, they wanna have perpetual document that you can go back and say, look, this is what we all agreed to.
Yep.
So, so they're very concerned about making sure that the, I call it the record clear, they wanna make sure the documents are established, so.
And I agree with that, I just think, hearing some of the, the comments about that, the current dormitory might be crossing the street at County Road 11 to go to the, the convenience store. I, I would think that a crossing from the county to be implemented right away would be my suggestion. The second thing, and again, we're gonna go back to the, the color drawing, which is also this one, the modifications to Ranchette, both on the north and south side, are both of those going to be implemented right away or are these future? I would assume south right away.
Well, south right away, but I think if you do the south, you gotta do the north just because you gotta have that commonality alignment. Again, that's something that we need to fine tune with the county. I didn't, you know, it's one of those chicken and the egg things, I didn't wanna, I mean, the county is agreeable to everything you see in the plans.
Okay.
We didn't get into, you know, when do we pull this trigger, when do we pull that trigger, because I needed to get this done so I can go back to it and say, okay, now I've got a plan that's been approved, so let's get into the details. So we really haven't dug into the, you know, the actual, when are we gonna build this, when am I gonna paint that, thing, which, which is, you know, after tonight, hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to go back to that and schedule that and we think one of the conditions were, were in tend to the county highway department.
Okay. Yeah, the crossing, the Ranchette, and then the last thing on Ranchette is, was there any discussions with, and this might not be a county discussion, but to have a right turn in lane and a bypass, i.e. a bypass lane for anybody turning right into the convenience store off of Ranchette heading south? Because if anybody's turning right, there might be traffic stopped there. Has that ever been discussed, do you know?
I think that pattern stays the same as it's painted out there now.
Okay.
So that, the intersection does not change, the way the right turn comes in.
I apologize, I'm talking the right turn off of Ranchette into the convenience store part.
So on Ranchette, right?
Yeah, looking for a turn lane on.
That's not painted at all right now.
Ranchette onto
So, down here? Uh, up, yeah, right there.
Yeah.
A right turn in, heading south.
So, okay, so, so, I get what you're saying.
Okay.
So, no, and here's the reason why. So that's the plan, it's a little, you can see it a little bit easier.
Yep.
The reason it's not is because, while the county hasn't told me this, I have my suspicion that they would really like to see a roundabout. I wouldn't have gone through all this effort with them otherwise. In a roundabout plan, there's no need for it. Everything flows within the roundabout and so there's no need for it. So what, what they were trying to work with us on is to also minimize, use the existing improvements as best as you can, light up all of the streets as best you can so that when the roundabout comes in, we can just connect all the parts, rather than putting, you know, extra, you know, extra features and things like that out there. So, I don't know, that's maybe not the right answer you're looking for, but we really didn't study the need for doing that because the traffic patterns didn't really require any necessity until you got to this, you know, kind of stopping, waiting, making decisions to turn right or left, not what's going on here. We did, this is wider, this is 30 feet wide so it can accommodate the same turning pattern that's here. So if I'm in this, I have three lanes coming out of the convenience store, right, left, right in, right out, and then, you know, moving forward or going to the other direction, so. So there's ability to, definitely the ability to modify this approach here, but there was not any discussion, they just, they didn't see the, I don't know, the patterns didn't really warrant the traffic there to accommodate it. I, the only I would say is, I mean, if, once this got in and we bring in the next application here, there's an opportunity to study to see if there's any deficiencies in the plan.
Ranchette is a city road, isn't it?
Yes.
Yep.
So who is financially responsible for all these changes on Ranchette?
Well, that's, those are the details that we need to work on, the developers' agreement and with the county. The county does do cost sharing on improvements to do with interceptions, so they've, you know, we've been talking to them and they're in agreement that there's some cost sharing going on here to improve the safety connecting to County Road 11. So, I mean, right now, it's part of the development process costs.
That's all I have, just
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution, including the 13 conditions as set forth on the second page, and also making sure that we take out that right out.
Can I? I heard through your discussion that you might wanna include crosswalks, so that might wanna be the 14th condition.
14th condition, including crosswalks?
The, the memo had the right in, right out, but the resolution is right in only.
Okay, Peggy has made a motion that would include an additional condition. Jerry, do you have suggested language for that crosswalk?
Crosswalks on County Road 11 being included.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Okay, before we vote, as usual, I, I will take you through the findings and I'll try to do that very quickly and maybe we could kind of expedite that tonight. I won't read the entire finding, but I'll, I'll take you through them. Finding A, the conditional, you shall not be injurious, is everyone satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay. Finding B, will not impede development, is everyone satisfied with that? C, will not create excessive additional requirements or public costs, everyone satisfied with that?
Yes.
D, it will promote and preserve the Northwoods character. E, will you, the conditional use will have vehicular approaches, we thoroughly discussed that, is everyone satisfied with that?
Yes.
F, adequate measures have been taken to provide sufficient off-street parking.
Yes.
Okay? G, adequate measures have been taken or will be taken to prevent, control of orders, fumes and so forth.
Yes.
Satisfied with that? H, will not result in destruction, loss or damage of the natural character.
No, I agree.
Satisfied with that? I, the conditional use will promote the prevention and control of pollution, is everyone satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay, good. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Who's the same? Motion passed. David, thank you very much, Mr. Spieso, thank you, a very good plan, very good presentation.
Thank you, it was exciting to have the opportunity to come back and kind of present the, what it can be, what it could be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion of rental of a cabin at 30233 Circle Drive, non-conforming use. Jerry, maybe you could kind of introduce this, this discussion?
As my memo indicates, Tom and Mandy Hinson are here and they're, they're interested in purchasing, purchasing an existing cabin located at 30233 Circle Drive. Their intent after purchase would be to utilize the cabin as a vacation rental. The property is owned, original neighborhoods are R3 and vacation rental is not allowed in an R3 zone. It appears that the cabin was rented on a regular basis up until 2013 or approximately 2013. I think that was some information that was submitted by the Hinton's to, to our office and I believe the owner of the property, and I'm assuming you're the owner of the property?
Yes, good evening, everybody, thanks for hearing some of it. I am the owner of 30233 Circle Drive.
Okay, he provided the information that it was utilized as a, regularly as a rental up until 2013 and, and, or 14?
Yeah, I have rented it now, not, not more than four times a year, in most periods, more to, closer, my friends, basically.
So, the distinction is that vacation rental is considered something that's done more than four times a year. Any residential property can rent legally up to four times, but if you're gonna do it more than four times, then it's considered vacation rental and it's only allowed in certain districts. What I should say is that because it's What I should say is that because it's, it was discontinued, or the use was discontinued, it was, it, had it not been discontinued, it probably could continue today. You'd go from one renter to the, or one owner to the next. The fact that it was discontinued, it's considered a non-conforming use, and it, and it's no longer conforming. And it's a year, I think there's a year lapse when, when the use discontinues for over a year, it just goes away. The other thing that happened here is that back in two thousand and ten, I believe, they were interim uses in, in an R1, or an R3 zone. In two thousand and thirteen, the, a change was made, and vacation rentals were no longer allowed in any R3 zones. I should also say that I don't have any records of an interim use on that piece of property for a, for vacation rentals in the period of two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirteen. That doesn't surprise me, because I think there's, you know, there's folks that are, that are renting their properties and don't have the interim uses anyway. But that's not the issue. The issue here is that they would like to purchase a cabin and use it for something that isn't allowed by the ordinance, and the real question is, should that be something that's allowed in an R3 zone? Or should it be rezoned to something else to allow that type of activity? That might be a bigger question than can be answered at this evening's meeting, but it certainly gets to the crux of the problem, I believe.
Well, since this is not a public hearing, and we haven't have, we do not have a public forum, you folks can sit down, and perhaps we could ask you, ask you questions?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Questions that we might have?
I don't know that I have a question as much as just a comment. If indeed our zoning ordinance says R3 original housing does not, is not ordinarily eligible for rental, and it was happening on interim use permits before that zoning ordinance was put into place, and then that was dropped from that particular unit, I would not be inclined to extend, to extend in this case, I would be more inclined to say if it's an issue that needs some discussion, then we look at the ordinance, not grant a variance, that would be my comment.
Thank you, Chair.
I would agree with what Peggy said.
I don't know, you really said that good, though.
Yes, she did.
I mean, the question is, is when they, when they set up this ordinance, they said, we really don't want this rental in these districts. So they set up a provision, says, okay, we're stuck if you've been doing it, if not, if you quit doing it, we're not going to let you do it again. The question would be, either the ordinance is wrong, but why should we make an exception to one unless we made an exception to everybody and say, oh, hell, rent wherever you want. Just tell us you rented it one time, and we're going to let you rent it again. We kind of don't want it in those districts, because number one, maybe it's fine for the owner, but there's other people in the neighborhood that probably, maybe aren't as crazy about having vacation rental property in their neighborhood, because rental people don't always act like owners. So actually, I'm just off the top of my mind, I haven't heard enough of a reason why we would make an exception. The real, the real question that was brought up by Peggy is, gee, is that ordinance really wrong? Do we really want to rent, allow rentals anywhere on Breezy Point if they claim they had rented it once before? Even though this place has got some proof that maybe they did. We, we kind of set up the ordinance because we didn't think it was the best idea in the world.
Mike, do you have any comments?
I was on the P and Z at the time that this ordinance changed in two thousand and thirteen, and if memory serves me correctly, was due to a home that wanted to be constructed for the sole purpose of being rented. That was in R3 district, and Larry, you hit it right in that, you, were you there at the?
I think I was there, I've always been there.
Is that the neighbors who were full-time residents, who do have pre-existing rental homes in the area, close to the vicinity of the new construction, and they commented just like that. They, they don't take care of the property, the renters are there to have a good time, they're not owners. So at that time, we did change the ordinance to remove the interim use permit from the R3 for rentals more than four times a year. I agree that if you are going to rent it, which we can do, to keep that in consideration, and to not look at this property as an individual in that case. The one thing I would maybe just throw off the cuff, and I like to throw things at the wall and see if they stick, but let's say that the, the use was continued throughout to today. Does that mean that it should still continue? If the interim use permit was never pulled, just because they were doing it wrongfully, should they continue to do it wrongfully? At what point does non-conforming use really apply? So, that's my two cents, but I agree, if you're going to look at this property, I think you should look at the R3 district in a whole, but that's my two cents.
Parking, parking is definitely an issue, too, it's very tight space, it's right across the street from a parking lot, but that's Resort Parking Lot, I would presume. You know, so that's just one of the considerations, but parking is definitely an issue.
This is intended to be a discussion, so I want.
I don't know where the, the new construction was made, that was exclusively for that, you talk about the year-round residence, I, the water's off up there six months a year, there's no year-round residence, you know, per se. I don't know what their frequency of rentals going to be, here's, go ahead, someone, go ahead.
Jeff.
Jeff Johnson, representing White Birch. Just, I didn't realize they were going to be here, I've never met them, I want to make, make you clear that I don't really have a dog in their fight, but I do, we do try to take notice when there's something on, in front of you guys about rental. And so I just wanted to point out a couple of things as reminders. The cabins that they're referring to are the original units from the original resort, from the nineteen twenties. And so those have always been rental units. From there, I understand where you're coming from as far as the non-conforming use was stopped, I get that. But the other part to remember is there are rental units all the way around them. We have Resort Commercial on our side of them, there's the condos along the beach, Surfside, Beachside, and the lodge units, those are all rental units as well. Some rent through us, some don't, but they do have a rental function that they allow in their facilities. And so it might be that a change of zoning is a better way to go, whether that's the R4 zone, or the Resort Commercial zone. I wouldn't necessarily tell you guys your job on that part, but that might be a better way to look at that as, as an option for these people to be able to use their facilities. Probably Resort Commercial might be the better way to go, again, as those were the original units, and there are other units at those cabins that are being rented out to this day. And let's face it, we know there's a lot of units around the city that are being rented in these neighborhoods, not necessarily through us, but where ours are at least licensed, there are others that are not licensed, so, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
I can just say that is, my mother owned this place and the one immediately next door before me. I used them personally until I bought her house on Breezy Point Boulevard, now I just have a year-round house. I believe the Hinsons, it's an arms-like transaction, other than pleasant conversation generally, I believe they're residents of Breezy Point, so we're not, you know, outside influencers coming here trying to, I actually have a personal reason to want to sell this, because I like to sell to them, but I also, you know, people who are local that move and maintain the property better than I do it, when I'm in the cities, is, you know, what I'm looking at. I guess, you know, that, I did have a chance looking at the zoning map, and I sort of agree, you know, that it's zoned to R3 original neighborhood, it's sort of an island in the middle of a whole bunch of rentals. It's zoned the same as is where I believe, you know, more full-time residents in the city would be. And so, you know, it's one of the reasons why, you know, we're seeking for this type of use after the city.
And we live one mile away from where, to rent it to our family and friends first, but then opportunity arose to be able to utilize that as a rental as well.
And I just, I have had inquiries about renting it out, you know, for an entire summer, if someone, certainly would put more burden on the municipal sewer system, and some of the other concerns that are in the municipal, that are in the vacation rental ordinance appear to be a better concern than what we adopted. If anybody's looked at this property, the interior is probably one-tenth the size of this room. It's not a place that will accommodate a large party, both in terms of a large party of people being inside, but also a large party period, as far as if there just being none of the land assets, a twenty-by-fourteen structure would issue.
All of this is accurate, I don't disagree with anything that anybody has said here, other than the fact that we do have a zoning ordinance that we are really bound to honor. If the zoning ordinance gets changed, we could certainly reconsider it, but as it stands now, we have a zoning ordinance.
It would need to be rezoned if you want to change it, and then, it does affect just, we wouldn't spot zone, it would be the, it would be the entire neighborhood if we decided it had to be rezoned.
Jerry?
Just for the record, I'd like the gentleman's name, please. I would like your name and address, please, just for the record, so that we can.
Yeah, Jerry Hootson, I'm at seven eighty-one Mohican Lane in Mendola, I'm a seller of five five one two two.
My sense is, since this is a discussion, my sense is that there's a reluctance to allow an exception, but there may be an interest to review the zoning. Let me run that.
Mr. Chair, a question for staff. Before it was turned into R3, was that zoned a different classification?
I can't tell you. I don't have the information. We can certainly look at that.
I would propose that we place this on our next agenda to look further into this zoning ordinance as it pertains to rentals. Do you agree? Okay, we will, we will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to the next agenda item, which is Chad Connor, WSN, introduction of proposed subdivision, Copperroot Edition, intersection of North Lakeview Drive and Weaver Point Drive. Thank you, folks, for sitting through all of this, I noticed that you've been fanning yourself, it's warm in here.
I'm handling a couple of, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm Chad Connor, Lance Raver with Sesmit and Holting. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce the project to the commission and public staff, appreciate the opportunity. We've had a number of meetings with staff, and meetings with adjacent or area property owners, kind of explaining our plans to you for the process, project here. As I'm aware, in the Eastern Atlantic, it probably is, this property's been looked at for a number of years as a developable piece of property, and a number of people that have taken wrong with this, and looked at developing this thing in a much more dense fashion than what we have before you today. Just so I'm clear, have you guys all, do you have the documents in front of you?
Yes.
We submitted, you know, for a preliminary plan, but we were kind of at that transition point of notice, and we wanted to take this opportunity to meet with you, so. I don't need to, all the ins and outs, I'd be happy to answer more questions than time we talk here, but but just to go through a little bit of the process, Gary Copperood here, the owner, is here as well tonight. He met with me and Jim Apple, the Realtor, earlier this winter, actually in two thousand and sixteen, I think, is the first time they took a look at this, looked at what was done in the past, looked at what's allowable now, and kind of decided that this is something that we'd be interested in going after. So, we went out, surveyed the property, coordinated with some of the previous wetland delineators, brought that information up to date, did a whole new survey, you know, this late spring, early spring, I should say. Took an opportunity at a layout, at a potential layout, basically what you see before you. We made a few minor tweaks and adjustments based on our meeting with the city staff. And it kind of came up with this development, we talked about utility extensions, things like that, too. In our meetings with the owners, adjacent owners, we had some different ideas about accessing the property from a couple of different directions, what you see before you is a, is a layout that comes off strictly from Lakeview Drive. You know, this plan here, it has five lake lots, all of those lots meet or actually exceed the minimum lot width requirements. They're all now two-acre lots is the minimum lot size in the R2 zone, so they're large lots. Two-acre lots compared to the, you know, surrounding properties, they're, they're larger than, than, you know, those were, which obviously those are created at different times, and even to the west, that's a different, that's a zoning transition right at our western property line, so we're going into that, that R3 zone, just to the west with those narrower lots. Access, like I said, we're coming from the west off of Lakeview. Also, visited with the city staff, they suggested that the proximity to the sanitary sewer, the city sewer system is right there, there's a mallow right on the corner. Rather than go with, you know, try to put in septic systems on each one of these lots, we're going to extend city sewer through the project at the developer's cost to the property line, you know, in order to provide that future extension to the point, should, should that ever be necessary, that would be a man available there. We aren't proposing any public streets, any, any access to these, it's going to be a private driveway. There'll be a road agreement, a maintenance agreement between the owners for that. There's not any through traffic to go up to Weaver, Weaver Point Road, Weaver's Point Road, excuse me. So this will be, kind of all the traffic will be continued, contained right within this development, and we'll exit right at the corner, the existing corner at the bottom of the hill on Lakeview. So, as you can see, the proposed access road kind of comes right through the middle of the property, or more to the north side, maybe, right at the base of a hill, right there will also be the location where the sewer gets extended. Now, there's kind of an old road grade in there, right now, as it exists, we're going to utilize that and plow in a private street in there.
So the sewer line goes down that road?
Right now, the sewer line comes down, runs north and south on Lakeview, and then goes west on Lakeview. So, we're kind of at the corner, what we'll do is extend it to the east, straight through our development, kind of right through where you see the, there's, there's a utility easement, you're looking at a small dry egg.
Yeah.
But I should have brought my PowerPoint presentation with, David kind of showed me up here, so, I know what to do next then, so. But, you know, I guess, other things, you know, the shared driveway, some of the concerns about density, obviously this is meeting the ordinance or exceeding the ordinance requirements for width and area. Like I say, we've looked at access, and talked to adjacent owners about that, and where the proper locations would be for that. Wetlands, I talked about, you know, all of the building sites on here, I don't know if you can tell, but, or if you're aware, there's definitely wetlands on the Lakewood portion of this property. So all of these building sites are well behind the seventy-five-foot setback requirement, they're going to be a hundred, a hundred and fifty, and even that middle lot three there, I think we looked at it today, it's about two hundred and fifty feet back, two seventy-five maybe even where the building site would be. So, you know, definitely, as these homes get built on these five lots, you know, they'll be in for permitting, they'll be in for scrutiny by the city staff, for grading permits and things like that. At this time, we're not proposing to put up any homes, or develop, or grade out any building pads or anything like that. So, that will be up to the individual landowners. I have also, you know, as I said, met with adjacent landowners, I know they've talked with, with other landowners on the point there. We've reached out to Soil and Water, I have not yet heard back from Soil and Water, I called them again today to try to get any feedback from them. Haven't been able to really connect, I know over the holiday week, or I guess it seems like two weeks here, on either side of the fourth, it's been difficult to get staff to comment. I did speak with Heidi at the DN- I did speak with Heidi at the DNR today as well, asked her if she had any concerns. And I, again, when we submitted this to the city, I, I sent the same supplemental to them, so they've had, you know, two weeks to look at it. She indicated that she didn't have any comment on it, any concerns at this point, so we've tried to close those gaps, too. I told her I'd follow up with her after tonight's introductory meeting, and if there were any concerns, we could maybe try to address those together, so. With that, I guess, I don't, I don't have a whole lot more. I think you guys, it's a pretty straightforward development, we're not asking for any, you know, variances or density increases or anything like that, so be happy to hear what you folks have to say and look forward to coming in next month with a, with an application for approval hopefully.
Questions? Peggy?
No, I don't have any questions.
Let's jump down, Mike, you?
I have one question. City sewer underneath a private easement road, if maintenance were ever to need to happen on that city sewer, who repairs it? With it?
Actually, the, the sewer is outside of the road. It, the, the proposal is out in the, it's actually in the bank.
It's on the north side, it would be in kind of the, in the bank, off of the edge of the shoulder.
There's, there's an issue with the depth of the sewer through there, and the more cover that you can have on it, the better, so it didn't, it isn't conducive to being put right in the roadbed.
Okay. And the thought is, the other thought is, too, that the snow removal, obviously puts more snow on the shoulders of the road or out in the ditches, that'll increase our insulation factor over that, that pipe, so that was the goal there.
Chair?
No, no questions.
We talked about this, I don't know, a couple of months ago, is this the land that's relatively low?
No, the majority of it is, is, let me see what the elevation is.
All the way up to the lake?
We're, the building sites are well over four feet above the lake.
Okay, then what is it from the building area down to the water?
Oh, like I say, it varies from the building sites, you know, from a hundred feet to two hundred and fifty feet, and it'll drop, you know, like I say, four to seven.
What's the elevation above the water level?
For the building sites or?
No, for.
There's wetlands, there's definitely wetlands, right? In between.
Is the wetlands between the building site and the lake?
Yeah.
And how do you get from the, where the building is to the lake when you're going through?
It's kind of like, if you look at the property out there, it's kind of, I don't know what you call it, if you call it historic ice ridges or whatever, so, so from where the building sites are, it's elevated, and it drops down into a wetland. There's trees growing in this wetland, it's not like cattails and, you know, duck swimming in it. It's probably, this time of year, it's probably relatively dry, I would guess. So that, that's, you know, probably, you know, based on our elevations, we're probably two feet, or, you know, foot to two feet above what the lake elevation is, so that, that is holding back water, it's not, you know, connected to the lake, there's a definite ice ridge out on the lake for the majority of it, so.
So when you get to real heavy range, how do you get from?
There's going to be, these, these folks would, would work with, you know, the city and then the DNR and, you know, Soil and Water to create boardwalks, you know, across these wetlands and that type of thing to access it. They aren't going to be filling any wetlands or anything like that.
Well, I think there's some, yeah, there's some rules on filling.
Definitely, yeah, and we'll be adhering to all of those, definitely.
Do you have to build bridges?
Not a bridge, no.
Would Lot Six have access to the lake?
No, no, Lot Six is totally separate.
Questions? Well, there may be questions from the audience. Any questions or, or comments?
Well, I just want to clarify one thing. I think Chad mentioned that ingress and egress is totally off the lake, you're correct. And you're protecting the wetlands. So there you go.
No more questions, Joanne, on the sewer line? I, I did very specifically ask that question, and the answer was, there is no intent as, as addressed at the, on, on the, on the issue of the White Birch development, to extend that sewer line. Am I saying that correctly, Jerry?
I think I was going to, my comment was going to be, this, this development is being treated the same as the White Birch development is, where we're trying to get the, the sewer to the next property. If, in fact, it needs to be extended, the opportunity is there, rather than going through developed property to get to the sewer line.
I might be one of your closest neighbors. So I've been watching what, what's going on. Any, any more discussion? Any questions? We're not being asked to take action tonight. This is just for our information. Joanne?
I'd like to make a comment. I think it's very healthy that something responsible is going to be done this way.
I do, too.
It's been sitting there a long time, you know, mostly, you know, my last name's Weaver, and we were, and Weaver's Point was created, but my in-laws certainly were, it was like they had lots of things happen between when they wanted, and now, and some of the proposals have not been really too environmentally sensitive to the one that happened in two thousand and four with seventeen units being proposed. Thank goodness that didn't happen because it was overloaded the area. I think this has merit, and some things will be happening that can shock progress, and still, the fact that it's responsible, and as I said, as it develops, had there been ingress and egress, where I think it was proposed to come out on Breezy Point Road, I would have gotten in trouble with that because it's sort of on a hill and a curve, but that apparently isn't happening, and it's a wetland reserve, and it would be more appropriate driving.
We'll have more good neighbors.
Pardon?
We'll have more good neighbors.
Well, I'm sort of like, if I live one, so this won't happen tomorrow, I can see there's a lot of work that has to be done, but.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I just want to piggyback on what Mayor Weaver had to say. I totally support her words, and I do recall distinctly the development that was proposed and she probably made it seven times, I think, and that would have been an absolute disaster. So I'm on board with you, and thank God that people back then had the forethought to not allow that. Bravo.
Good. Well, thank you very much. Good luck.
Can I, just, just a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
The intent is that there will be a public hearing at your next planning commission meeting, that we will review the preliminary plat. If the preliminary plat is approved, the intent is that we would piggyback that with the final plat, if there's no real changes, and we're doing that because of the, it's, it's really a pretty simple plat, we really haven't identified a lot of issues, and they've addressed just about everything we've asked for, so that's the intent. If something should come up and we can't do it that way, then we'll probably just address the preliminary and then go another month, but I think we're, the intent is to address them both at the same time.
Sounds good. Thank you. Other, we have a flood plain ordinance. Can we kind of go through that for us, Jerry?
Actually, that, this is something that we've been working on with the DNR for, actually started back in two thousand and ten. It's been a long time coming. Okay, Kathy needs to take a break.
You'll just take a couple minutes, this is almost done here.
Why don't we all take a break and get a drink?
That's fine. Give it.